Hi Christine.
Hi, good morning, afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good morning and afternoon.
Yes.
Or evening.
Yes. How are you doing today?
Good. We got through all our S-Back testing last week, so.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Super fun.
Good morning Cindy or good afternoon Cindy.
Just got lost. I'll come right back.
It's been a Wednesday for me all day. It's gonna be a very long.
It's been a long day, hasn't it? Yesterday was was hellacious for me. I tried to finish reading all those job descriptions. Holy cow.
They're very in-depth, which is good. Good evening, morning, afternoon-ish.
Yeah. I told him I have to text my kids and say, do not, do not text me right now. Don't kind of text me today at all or call me. Just like they they know it's Tuesday and they always do it. Which school do your kids go to, Holly?
Um, one goes to Orchard, two go to Savage, and one goes to Enoch's.
Uh-huh.
I like to spread it out.
Well, I had four and I, we were on year-round school way back then.
I have five.
Huh?
I have five. I have one in college, too.
Well, I I put each of my kids on a different track. And everybody thought I was crazy, but I said, I want that whole month with just that one child, you know?
Hmm.
And then we'd spend the whole month together doing things. And my kids were like, this is so crazy, Mom. That's what I know. I love year-round school. I just loved it. I thought it was the greatest thing ever.
I was in school before it happened and I didn't start teaching until it was phased out, so I missed it.
Well, you know, the teachers, lots and lots and lots of them loved it and lots and lots of them didn't, so.
It was a very polarizing thing.
And then when we, when we got, finally got Savage built, you know, and we had enough room for all our middle school kids. And we got, um, Freedom and Mary Ann Sanders built. We began to have enough room for all the kids. We had them in the aisles, out in the hallways. I mean, they were everywhere.
I miss Mia Kawa.
Hello, everyone. Your email just, your Facebook just blew me away. October, I was gonna, I was going to be broke. I took that little thing out and said, whatever month you get, this is what's gonna happen to you.
One of the memes or a joke?
It was an email, yeah.
Yeah, that wasn't mine.
Broke. I was like, five years, five years from now, where are you gonna be? That's what it was.
Yeah, that wasn't a very optimistic one.
No, it wasn't. That would should be eliminated.
All right, are we at 5:30? I can check my phone.
4:30.
4:30. Trying to move this thing along, aren't I? All right, welcome, everyone. Appreciate you joining us this evening for our special budget study session. We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Um, I'm looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I saw some of it.
Move it moved by Ms. Talcott. Seconded by Mrs. Lindsay. Roll call, please.
Board member Lindsay.
Aye.
Board member Harvey.
Aye.
Board member Ross.
Aye.
Board member Talcott.
Aye.
Board president Mia Kawa.
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Um, if you'll all stand please for the, for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, um, as most of you have seen, we've got a really full agenda tonight, so. We'll just do our best to scoot through it. Um, and I'm just gonna go ahead and turn the time over to, uh, Mr. Frederickson for our budget study session intro.
Right, good evening, good evening or late afternoon, everybody. It's not evening yet. Again, first of all, before we jump in this, I just wanna express my appreciation, uh, to the board and to our staff. For the amount of effort we've been doing this year and direction in looking at budget. I think, yeah, I feel like almost every board meeting, we've had a budget study. And I think it's really, I know for me, um, been very helpful. To just kind of keep the lay of the land because it changes so often. And, uh, so this evening, I, I, I feel, um. You know, I feel, I feel real positive about the, the chance we have here. One, we feel like the board has been given its directions. We've been looking at. You know, uh, possible reductions and then moving forward about what we wanted to restore. And this is perfect timing, uh, for us now to start doing budget development. So, um. Again, that's where it can be our focus tonight is just one, at our last meeting, we felt like the board did give us direction. And we may ask for some clarifications to make sure we're all on the same page, uh, before we start diving into the budget development. Again, this upcoming month is the May revise. So again, that's, that'll show us again the landscape. Not anticipating any curveballs like last year. Um, nobody wants to repeat that at all. But I think what it did is it helped us, prepare us to really be thoughtful in, in our planning. And again, uh, it's nice to start seeing the, uh. Reinstating the things that we end up, uh, cutting when we thought we had a 10% cut last year. And so that, that's, that's a positive. But again, uh, this evening's main focus, again, just a little further clarification. On anything that we feel like we need to, uh, change before we start diving into the process in May. Okay, Lizette or Lisa?
Oh, Mr. Frederickson?
Yes.
A quick question. Um, are we prioritizing these in a, in a, uh, the things that we're adding? Are we prioritizing them in case the budget of them comes back and not come back? You know, less 10%, but comes back like three or four. Are we prioritizing what we can, um, put back in?
Well, if we hit that same scenario, or if we feel like it's significant less, we will jump back in together. That's be part of, we'll have to shift gears again. On what our budget development looks like, so.
No, I'm just thinking, you know, we added a bunch of things. Um, my question is, are we, are they in a priority list or are they just all random? Oh, I mean, are some of them really the ones we really want? Or are they ones that we have to put back?
I think to answer that question would be because we've got this added COVID money. It changes the way you look at that because many of the things we restored and added were based upon. That one-time funding. So it gets blended between the work we did last year, or you guys did last year. In looking at your general fund and then setting priorities on what would go back. What we would do is if, if the May revise is a shocker for us. Or makes us realize, hey, we've gotta go back and look at this again. We would have to set aside what were we looking at for one-site funds? Our one-time funds and then look at the others out of the general fund and make priority. That's the only thing I can think of, uh, way to respond to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, good evening. Um, and I would agree with that. Uh, thank you for the introduction, Mr. Frederickson, and our approach moving forward. Is, um, as the next step, providing a May revise update. And if something were to be significantly different, that would, um, definitely be a conversation. That, you know, we would need to have it, determine the impact and then bring that information to the board to, um, have discussions around that. So, um. As we usually do, I'm going to go through and highlight and go through the highlights, um, or some of the highlights of the changes. Since our last, uh, budget study session last, um, at the last board meeting. And, um, I, I agree with Mr. Frederickson. I think we've had several budget study sessions, but we appreciate the, um. The work and the input, the information from the, the, the board, um, and the, and the direction. And so tonight we're looking for, um, final direction around, um, several of these items. To, um, as you know, you know, we are moving into May and so we need to get going on incorporating these into our. Budget development so that Lisa and her amazing fiscal team can, um, work her magic and get this all in time, um, to come to you. For initial, um, public hearing on June 1st, so. Um, so I'll go through and just highlight, um, some of the changes, starting with. Gonna go down to page six. Um, is where we have the first change here. And I'm sorry for the quick scrolling. Okay, so six, um, you see some highlights here on benefits. We have some, um. Updated numbers and, and up here in the top, you see the highlighted, uh, for example, for 21, 22, uh, for PERS. Being at 22.91. And then down below here, you can see where was that 23% before. So you see the change, um, just slightly. And, um, word has it, today we received information on yet another update for this. So, you know, we go based on the latest information that's coming to us from the state in terms of the rates. But as of the time we put this together, these were the latest rates that we had. So. We have some changes there and those would be incorporated into budget development. Moving on down to the bottom of page six, uh, where we speak about special ed and the, um, district, um, contribution for special ed. Um, I make note here and we'll talk about it a little bit more on the multi-year projection that we are, um. Uh, we know that the, as of now, the information we've received is that the special ed revenues. Are also projected to receive the 3.84% COLA increase to those revenues. And, um, we're leaking at approximately a million. That's probably on the more conservative side. Uh, we just had a meeting today with FELPA giving us additional, um, budget information for next year and additional numbers. Um, but as of right now, um, our conservative estimate was adding about a million, um, in for next year. And so that would, um, help offset the, the contribution that we have into the general. Into the, I'm sorry, special ed, um, program from the general, uh, fund. So we'll see that, um, reflected on the multi-year projection when we look at that in just a minute. Going down to the next update on page seven, uh, just a slight change to the master agreement. And that is reflective of an update you see, um, later on. Where we talk about the, um, induction program and just the increased number of participants that we anticipate for next year. So that has a slight increase, um, that's reflected here. And then going down to, uh, really probably the biggest, one of the biggest updates. Looking at on page 10. Our multi-year projection update. And so what I have done, and you, we've had different scenarios. I've, you know, labeled and updated each time that we look at this. And now we're looking at. What I'm calling scenario E here and what we've done, um, and are representing here in this projection is showing. Um, the updates to the potential restorations and reductions, um, that are in the attachment A that was provided. That we have been talking about, um, boy, I believe since November or December. Um, was initially more of a reduction conversation that has moved into a restoration conversation. So this is showing, um, those updates here, uh, and that number. And then that special ed COLA, um, that I just spoke to. So if you look right here on this line here, special ed. Projected COLA in 21, 22, you see the 1 million here. And that is what I just spoke about with the projected, uh, revenue increase. Um, that would offset here, you see the 13.1 million, uh, projected contribution for special ed. And that would be an offset to that. Um, and then I have that carry forward into the following, into the following year. Just like we would with any, um, COLA we receive, um, from the state. We assume it to be an ongoing COLA, um, unless we have projections that show otherwise. And actually, our projections as of, again, the January governor's budget, we've been looking at and all those assumptions are. Even an additional COLA in the 22, 23 year at this point. But this 1 million is purely reflective of the 3.84 increase, um, projected for 21, 22. So we see that impact here in the projection. Um, and then remember, keep in mind, these projections are, if you remember, as of second interim. Um, so here for 2021, we have everything through second interim. But going forward, these are taking, taking that second interim position and, and just doing some projections for the next couple of years. Um, and this is just to give us an idea of what we're looking at. Once we bring forth the actual, you know, budget, uh, development numbers. It will be different because there will be actuals that will be, well, actual budgeted numbers, I should say, not actuals. But, um, you know, more specific budgeted numbers based on positions, based on the whole budget development process.
Lizette, Lizette? Yeah. I know you don't, you probably don't want questions, but I'm afraid I'll forget. On this special ed, um, it, since it's, it's a one-time money for right now that we know of. Because of a lot of money coming down from the federal government. Uh, are we also setting a counterbalance, um, budget showing what would happen if we don't get that money? That, like, in the 22, 23?
So this specific, um, COLA increase is not, this is not one-time money. This is an actual, just like we're showing on the, um, on our LCFF side. Um, just how we are anticipating that COLA, this would be the COLA on the, on the, um, state revenue side that would be ongoing at this point. So, um, that's different from any of the one-time COVID funds that we're, we're talking about at this point.
I, I understand, but I'm, I guess what I'm going back to is when we got that huge 10% COLA increase. And, and thought that it was gonna be carried on and the only, and we set our budget to that. And then we were, uh, diving into the, into the minus columns because we didn't, um, think that. We thought we was gonna keep, keep getting that 10% every year, but we didn't. So my, my concern is that we're not gonna get that 3.84 every year. Uh, like you think and, um, or that million dollars, you know, down there. Um, just kind of a little bit leery about building too much of a strong budget on that.
Yeah, and, and, um, I would say to that, that what comes out in the May revise will be very, um. You know, indicative to us of, of where we're going. Um, I mean, it's gonna give us, uh, definitely a, a better update on. If there's any dramatic change that they're, that they're considering, um, for the actual, you know, budget adoption at the state level. But if there's anything significant in the May revise, um, then I think we can open up that conversation and look at. Preparing alternative projection scenarios, um, for the, the, for us to look at and consider in the out years. Um, or if it's the board's desire for us to just, you know, look at that every time regardless. Um, you know, we can have, I think, a conversation around that as well.
Okay.
But I guess that to go back to and just, I understand, you know, your concerns are where they're coming from. And we will continue to keep this information updated anytime we get, um, that updated information and, and, and continue to share that with the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and then going into this next section here really is where we see some of the big changes. Uh, for what you have seen before, I've updated these numbers to reflect, um. The discussion we'll be having with the attachment A and the potential, uh, restoration. And so when we look at that attachment, and I, and I talked through this in the, uh, narrative on page 11, we'll take a look. Um, the, the items that are noted there that would be restored and, and be, and go back into the general fund budget. Amount to 866,000. Um, and that's the number you see represented here, the 866. And you see it on an ongoing basis because I'm making that assumption at this point in time that if we would be restoring that. That could potentially be restored, um, on an ongoing basis. Doesn't have to be that way, but I just made that assumption for the sake of the projection. And then, um. Here, these next two lines, they're crossed off with no amounts because as you see on the attachment and we've been talking about. Those, um, those items would be, uh, funded out of COVID funds. And so those would not be impacting here the, um, the unrestricted general fund. And so those would not be impacting here the unrestricted general fund. And so, and then you see that there's nothing in the budget reduction to balance budget item, line item, because when you look at it just like this, you see that this represents, that the projection for this shows not being in deficit spending, so just slightly to the, to the increase of about 250,000 in the 21, 22 year and then this next year out going up to just about over 700,000. So you see the elimination of the deficit spending potentially. And then also the second piece, the two pieces that we look at and review and have been a focus of ours, I know in all these discussions, and looking at the reductions and the fiscal position of the district, not just for next year, but going forward is whether we're deficit spending and where we're at with the reserve and the unassigned reserve. So with a, with a board goal where we've been at the 9, 10%, ideally the, the 10%, I know I've heard expressed by the board, this would show in this projection that we would be at about 11 and a half percent right here for the 21, 22 year and then climbing up just a little bit to 11.8 in the 22, 23 year. So because of that, because we're at, above that 10% goal, then my assumption based on the discussions we've had, we've been having is there would not be a need to have a line item with budget reductions. Okay? All right. And then I'm going to go ahead and dive into a little bit more elaborating on those reductions, looking at the, I'm sorry, the restorations sheet. It was originally the reduction sheet, so I keep referring to it as the reduction sheet. But here on the next page, on page 11, I talked through, again, COVID funding that we've been having many discussions on this COVID funding for a few months now. And I just kind of talked through a lot of what we've had discussions on and the significant amount of the COVID funds and that we understand the, the impact that they will have on the district operations over the next three years. And that every year we will be looking at this impact on the general fund and on our projections and analyzing and reviewing this to make adjustments as necessary to ensure the fiscal solvency of the district, because I know we've had multiple conversations around this and ensuring that, you know, recognizing that these are one-time funds and so we have to be vigilant of that as we move forward. And then here in the next paragraph, I just summarize the direction that was given at the last budget study in terms of the positions and so I list those out there. And then here I talk about what we'll continue to be having discussions on is the planning of the COVID funds. At the last budget study, we had the three-year big picture planning, if you recall, just to kind of start to lay out some of the ideas that have come forward and things that were, have been already been doing with some of these funds. And we've also been having conversations and informing the board of the expanded learning opportunity grant and the plan that has to get approved by the board by June 1st with that funding, which is just under the 5 million. And that, that really is, and we've been having those conversations and seeing, once those plans get in place and we are able to work through what those supports and, and those additional measures that will be put in place by the, the district here in this upcoming year. And once we work through a lot of that, it'll also just tie in and have a domino effect with the rest of the COVID funds and how we tie those all together to really support the mitigation and the learning loss going forward. So that, planning on that, the ELO funding will just be, just critical to looking at the whole big picture and use of all of the COVID funds. So I just kind of speak to that here and want to remind, you know, the board that that's what we'll be doing and bringing forth to you with that planning of the ELO funds. And then here, I talked through the attachment that I've mentioned, I think several times now, looking at the budget restoration. And so I'll bring that attachment up here. And I've highlighted in green, try to keep it color coded so we can keep track of all the changes here as we've gone along through the process. So anything in green here is as the update for today. And there's not a whole, whole lot. You see, we've talked about a lot of this, everything in the blue being a restoration, some of it going to COVID funds versus general fund. And we had, I think, a little bit more of a discussion around that piece of it and what's general fund at the last budget study. And so this is the part that, when you look at this here in the orangey-yellow, this section here, this is the 887,000 that when we looked at the multi-year projection just a minute ago, you saw that amount on there. That is specific for these lines and that these, we're talking about restoring them back into the general fund as opposed to, you know, using COVID dollars on some of these things. So that is, I want to point that out as, you know, where you can tie that amount back to. And then the other two green lines here that you see highlighted are things that we had and been discussing but have either changed amounts or we've moved them up. So the first one here, field trips and sixth grade camp, if you remember, is something that was reduced in the current year. We reduced it this year, obviously due to COVID and the impact and really not being able to do a whole lot of that. So this, along with a lot of the other things that we've been talking about, travel conference will be proposed to come back in. And obviously, this is dependent on the restrictions and what we're able to do. But for the sake of assuming that if we're able to do that in this coming up year, we would be ready to do that by having that in budget, if that's the determination that's made and the direction that's given. So that's what that is there. And then the next one is highlighted, was already here last time, it's just an update to the amount for the induction, year one and two induction. I mentioned this as I talked through the updates in the narrative that we had a slight change to the number of enrollees and that. And so that went up, I think it was like 99,000, it went up to 120. So that's the update here, you see in this amount right here. So really, that's all the updates to this sheet. Everything else you see, there's no other green here noted that all these things were here before. These were really reductions that we were talking about before when we were looking at, going through a process of, of reduction. And then down here, I just made note of that 866 that I've been talking about and that those, that total would go back to general fund. So really, that's the main update here and this is what we'd be looking at getting final direction from the board to be able to go ahead and, and reinstate these things back into the general fund budget, along with all the budget assumptions and guidelines that we have as part of the document that we've been reviewing. But this would be the kind of last piece and us being able to move forward and work on that to bring you either any May revise updates or, again, June 1st being ready to be able to present to you, to you and the public, the, the first public hearing for the budget and the LCAP. So I think that about sums up all the changes. I'm happy to take any questions or Mr. Fredrickson, if there's anything else that, I think we've had several discussions on this and if there's anything else you want to share or point out, if not, I'm happy to take questions from the board.
Sorry, I was just checking. I think Christine keeps getting dropped out, so I think she's trying to work through coming back on. Okay, George, I see your hand. Please.
Sorry, I am here. I am here.
Oh, good. Okay, good, 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 good. Okay, go ahead, George.
Lizette, if you could help me a little bit, when I was looking at your, the MYP, I could not see on there how we were accounting for the COVID funds. There's what, eventually going to be 30 some million dollars in COVID funds if I, my memory is right? How will we account for that in our normal budgeting process and on the MYP? Because I don't see it inserted as a revenue and I don't see it leaving as an expense.
Yes, that's a great question, Mr. Ross. So that, on this that I have up here, this is the unrestricted side of the general fund. And so it will not be anywhere on, on that side of the house, if you will, on the fiscal side. It'll be completely on the restricted funds and each of those will be tracked in their own separate resources, their own separate accounts, if you will. And let's just say, you know, we, we have them in all the different pots you saw, we have about seven different pots, but they'll all roll up into the 30 million dollars or so funds that we have and show on the restricted multi-year projection as a incoming revenue here at the top, for example. And then down here is expense, depending on whether we'll be salaries, supplies, and so they'll be in their respective categories here. So in terms of how we have to present the multi-year projection, that's how they'll roll up into the multi-year projection. But we can, we will have those in separate accounts that when you look at the backup and the sex detail that comes to you with all the budget revisions, they'll be in their each, and their individual resources where we have to track them. And that's as determined by the state, they have to be put into their separate resources.
Right. And, okay, so I see that you're going to put that. So it creates a perception problem in the future. There, there's really nothing we can do about it. The best way to describe to fellow board members and the public is, is that how we, year after year, save, for example, textbook funds and we see that we're positive one year on the bottom line and then the next year we go negative. The concern that I would have is the perception, especially not this year, maybe not even next year, but the following year, is, is that we could go negative in our budget 15 million dollars. And if there's some way, I'm, I'm not suggesting a way, I'm just having us think about it of creating eventually a, a line on the, on the MYP, on the restricted side, saying that, yes, we have a reserve fund of 35 million dollars, but of that 35 million, 25 million of it is COVID funds. So that, there's not this perception that this, that we're hoarding money and not using it on whatever project that a lot of people think we might want to spend it on. So I'm not suggesting anything right now, I'm just putting food for thought that as this money starts to come in, we could see a ballooning on our bottom line for maybe a year or so and then large numbers exiting in certain years. And it could make our, our fiscal picture look a little wonky and out of shape, all because of the large number of COVID money coming in and it going out and maybe it not syncing up in the same fiscal year. Just, just a, just a thought.
Absolutely correct. That is definitely one of the challenges with, you know, significant one-time funds such as this. And just, I think, talking through that, explaining, footnoting where we can and adding narratives to help explain that, you know, when looking at the fiscal picture.
Okay, no further questions, George? You're good? Okay, Mrs. Lindsay, your hand is up.
Yes. Lizette, piggybacking off on what Mr. Ross said, I, I really think it's really important that you, and it sounds like we're, we're running two budgets, like two sets of books. And I know, I know we are because one's restricted, one's not. But in the past, we've, we've included that, the restricted in our, our budget so that people can see that. So I agree with him. I think it's really important, we may not, you don't need to do, I don't think we need to do a line item by line item, but I do think it's important that they see that, that we got COVID funds that had to be spent by a certain time and there's, you know, they're one-time and, and things like that because it really is, people are thinking those schools are getting a ton of money right now and we are, but it's all related to COVID. So the other thing I wanted to ask you is that 866,000 that's going to be, being drawn from the, the general fund, is that coming out of that three-point whatever COLA that you're looking at? Where are you looking at, at reinstating that and where do you think we're going to get the money for it?
Well, I guess if we had to tie it to specific dollars, we, we could, we could say that that makes that possible definitely because of the increased revenue. But it, it's not, you know, on, on the budget side of it, it's not necessarily tied in that way. But when we look at, you know, what helps make, make this, what helps us be able to do this, definitely whenever we have increased costs, we need something to help support that in this increased revenue. When you look here from 20, when you look here from 2021, from 72 million to 75 million, that definitely, $3 million makes a great contribution to being able to make a restoration like that possible.
But you're, but you're assuming, you're assuming that two years out that we're going to get that, that COLA. Now, we assumed two years ago that we were going to get COLA last year and we didn't get it. So my point being here is, how can we build a budget based on assumptions that you have really no idea that it's really going to be there? And if we're going to put it back in and we're going to restore it, I, I mean, I don't really want to turn around in two years and have to say, oops, now we can't do it again, we've got to pull all those out. I, I would like to know that we have a firmer foundation of, of having that funding there for, I mean, we're, our ADA is lower and so we're not, we don't have that increase in growth. And if you're depending on that COLA that, you know, for, for supporting that money, I'm, I'm a little leery about that. I'm, I'm not saying I wouldn't willing to try it, I'm just saying, I really wish you could give us a stronger, I mean, if I'm busy my budget at home, I, I need to know exactly where that money is coming from and I can't just say, well, I think maybe I'm going to make that much money next year, you know? And so that scares me a little bit in, in the way this budget is being built.
Yeah, I completely understand where you're coming from and I wish I could have that assurance as well for the district. But the, the reality of the way that, you know, funding works for districts in California, we're not able to do that until the budget is passed and, but we have timelines, you know, we have to pass our budget before that happens. So it is a bit of a, you know, backwards process if you think of it that way, but what we have is the January governor's budget that may revise along the way to provide us updated points in time with new information. And then, you know, when we pass the budget, we make it very clear in all of our documents and make it very clear in the information we're looking at right now, that we are looking at these numbers and making decisions based on these numbers, based on the most recent information that has been given to us from the state. Because really, that's all we have unless we take a position that we're going to completely throw that, throw that out the door and make our own assumptions, which, I mean, is not common, but it's, it's not to say that we, you know, couldn't do that. But, you know, we would need to have some, we would want to have some kind of a rationale for why we would be, we, why we'd be doing that. So, so yes, I, I completely understand where you're coming from, but I would say that what we can do then is when things change, then we have to look at our projections, update them and then see what adjustments we need to make at that point.
And then if I can just add to that as well, so like the 866,000, we are basing that upon what the COLA projection is. But if we hit May and, or even June, when the final budget passes and we find that they dropped the COLA or lessened the COLA, these are the kind of reductions we can come back again because it's not necessarily personnel related. Those are the ones that are the most challenging, that March date. Those are the ones that are the most challenging, that March date and the, and the assumptions and decisions we make there. These are more program-oriented, that if that does happen, Mrs. Lindsay, we can go back and have some flexibility with that amount.
Well, there's, it's deferred maintenance on the buses. I mean, that seems like an important thing to me. Maybe I'm wrong, but.
Well, some of these, a large portion of that, and that's a very good point, Mr. Frederickson is making, when we look at the first three lines, actually, 337, 200,000, 100,000, these are the set aside that we put into these different funds. One, the first one going towards our OPEB, our post-employment benefit fund. And then the next one being for bus replacements, which is, you know, important as well, and deferred maintenance in a separate fund. But I, to Mr. Frederick's point is that these are not tied to people. These are discussions about then if we're going to be making adjustments, do we look at these and make adjustments here? And that would be a whole discussion, right? But these transfers or set asides into these funds, these don't happen right out of the gate. These don't happen until, usually typically actually at the end of the school year. There's just part of our closing out process where we move over these funds. So there's room to continue to have those discussions if and when we need to.
Okay, that's, that's very clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lindsay. I'm scrolling over. Mrs. Talcott, do you have any questions you'd like to ask? Okay, and, and I think Christine, you're all the way at the end. Let me see. I don't know where you went. Do you have any questions, Christine?
Yeah, this is, can you hear me okay now?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, the Wi-Fi just went out in my house. I think a power, I mean, I think the, the line went down. And so I just wanted to understand then, aside from the amount of money, this procedure that we were following is, is not any different than the procedures we've done in the past. These are best practices and standards that the government kind of wants us to do. Is that right, Lizette?
Yes, in terms of just the budget development process itself, absolutely.
Okay, so my, my question, I guess then, so my, just to clarify then, so we kind of have to take what the government says. I mean, kind of, I mean, yes, we know that things can change, but we have to go off their assumptions versus our own assumptions. Is, is that correct?
No, no. I mean, I wouldn't say we have to. I would say that's generally the, the practice of all districts across the state. So, but it's not like it's a requirement that your budget has to match that. Now, if we're going to assume, you know, 5%, the county's going to come back to us and go, um, wait a minute. You know, you can't assume more. So that's definitely not common at all or any, anything that anybody would do or any budget that would get approved as such. If we're going significantly lower or lower, what would be the, the rationale? Because again, the, the industry practice and when county reviews our budgets, they look at what is the guidance coming out from, from the state in terms of what the COLA and all these numbers are at this point in time, based on the latest information.
Okay, that sounds great. Then I think, I feel really comfortable with this and I really impressed with the way you guys have presented these numbers so thoroughly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, so I just have one follow-up question. And it kind of goes with what George and, and partly what Cindy was talking about, in the sense in what we've talked about before, that, that we really are kind of working on two budgets, right? One that's here today, gone, and two tomorrow's, you know, our COVID money. And, and then, and then the solid budget that, that's going to, that's going to carry us through and it's going to be there for the end. And it, it's almost like, I feel like we need to have those, you know, those old school like medical books where you could put, you put these transparencies down of the human body and, and it have, one would have the blood flow and one would have the bone structure. And that's almost what I feel like we have to have in place, like we have this transparency that we put over the top of, of this solid budget that we're working on. This is our, this is our bones and our whatever, and then we have to lay this transparency over the top of it saying, okay, but here's the COVID, COVID monies, and this is how we're using them. But I guess what I need to know is, when, when we peel that transparency off and we're left with our bones again, and we still have because, and we still have these, these COVID positions that we've created that we talked about last time, that's what's not represented here in that, you know, how are we going to carry that forward? And, and it's because, I think partly because this budget, you know, we've got our, our current year plus two out. But where we're going to really have to start looking is that, that next year, when those, when and if those COVID monies dry up, right? So as I, I tried to just kind of do the sums really quickly according to this, you know, what positions we talked about last time, and please correct my math if they're wrong, but I came up with about $500,000 in personnel, like we voted on, but we talked about those positions. You know, whatever you have listed here, plus the two, the two PD days, takes us to about a million dollars. Would you say that's about accurate?
I would have to pull them up because.
Yeah, I, I just did, I just crunched tomorrow talking, so I just did the, the ones that say they're COVID funds now in the red, but then they'll be moved over to general fund in a few, right? So, you know, we talked about this extensively last time, that we are hiring and, and putting these positions in with full understanding that if we pull that transparency back and there's not a new one to lay over, you know, to lay over it, then, then we would have to look at reducing those, right? So as long as we are approaching our decisions with that in mind, you know, we always look at these and we look at what positions we would love, you know, positions and funding priorities we'd like to put in place. And if the numbers settle at the bottom to where we need to be, which is what you've shown us tonight, then we move forward. So I think as long as there's a board, we understand that, you know, with these, these changes that you've recommended at $866,000, it still settles us where we will be with a, with our, you know, minimum reserve that we like to keep in there. And that COVID transparency that we will have to take a good hard look at in a couple of years, so.
Yeah, Mrs. Mia Cowell, I appreciate you bringing that up, because I think we're going to have to start looking at these layers. Because the positions that you were just referring to at this point are just one layer. We're working on that ELO plan. And again, when you're talking about $6 million in support for learning, you're also going to be talking about possible personnel there as well.
Right.
So I think the board is just going to have to see each time we do a plan, this just happened to be the first phase.
Right.
So again, it's all up for board approval, but you can, you can assume if we're looking for remediation, we're looking at possibly some personnel. And so I think we are going to have to, I like that analogy. That's a good visual, because you'll lose track quickly. We're all, if it's people.
Right.
You know, what pot do they belong to?
Right. Always a crazy way to look at budgeting and planning.
Jan, real quick question.
Sure.
Lizette, and then, I, I know you mentioned that the COVID monies, and you broke down how they had to be spent and when they had to be spent. Were there any of the COVID monies that we can set aside for future COVID issues? Or that could be set aside?
Yes, we have the different pods with, in total, up to about three years, right, going out. So at this point in time, that's about as far out as we can go with these particular funds, unless they, you know, change the timing on something. And so, yeah, they're definitely, when you say future, within those three years, that's what we're allowed to do right now.
Okay, so then these positions that you say are, that we're putting in here, that say are three-year positions, that's where you're basing that on?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. That, that, that makes it a little clearer for me and a little less frightening. Now, these people will understand that if we don't have the money, that that position will not be there, right?
Correct.
Because this time we hired 15 people, telling them that we, you know, that was a temporary position and we ended up hiring them all. So I just, I just, you know, I want to be sure that, that, you know, we're, we have the backup like we did this time.
Correct, yes. And, and, you know, because of transition and just things, you know, constantly evolving, as we go through year after year, we will be continuing to look at where we're at in that process with any transitions, with needs, with funding, all of that. It's a constantly changing picture.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you both very much. I don't see any other questions, but I just appreciate this discussion that we've had over time and, you know, trying to make clear a very complicated funding situation. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into making this, us have some clarity. Mr. Frederickson, or Lizette, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I think just making sure that we have direction then to proceed from, from everybody with the restoring of this. This is the, the main piece we wanted to get direction on. Like I said, in order to be able to move forward and build these things into budget.
Right. Okay, I think, I think from what I heard from all board members, unless I'm mistaken, please speak up. But I think the direction is, is to go ahead in our planning process, and then this would obviously be voted on when we vote for the budget itself, correct? Okay.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Very good.
All right, very good. Thank you very much, everyone. We finished a few minutes early, which is always great. We'll see you back in 20 minutes for, I need you to, three of you to pop in, please, in 20 minutes for, to open it up, and then we'll go into closed session from there. Thank you.
I will not, I will not be there, Jen, so don't wait for me, okay?
All right, three, two of the rest of you besides me. Great.